I have called this June 13th meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and trustee DeCosta, would you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you do the ones to make?
Sure.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so. Clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCosta.
Present.
Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Clerk Reyes, here. Supervisor Wilt.
Present.
Okay. Very good, we're all here and the first order on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the May 9th public budget hearing. You have them in your binders. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I have a motion by trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Heilenbach. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Abstain.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Okay. Then we have the minutes of the board meeting of that same evening, May 9th. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to reapprove the minutes of the May 9th, 2023 regular board meeting.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee DeCosta. I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the minutes of the May 9th meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, discussion? Hearing none. Realized we didn't need a roll call. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the June 6th committee of the whole, which was our... We don't have those yet.
I didn't get them.
No.
No. We'll deal with those at our next meeting.
I was pretty sure we turned those in.
We may have. We may have missed emails. All right, so.
It's probably my fault.
We don't have those yet, so those will be...
Deputy Clerk Andrew, always on it.
Okay. Then communications.
We have two communications today. We have a thank you letter from our friends at Aging Care Connection, a letter from Jan Walsh, Director of Philanthropy and External Affairs, wishing to thank the township for their contribution to the program. We also have a thank you note from Girl Scout Troop 45954 and Ms. Lisa Lambro sent us a nice thank you letter as well.
Very good. No action needed there. Thank you very much. So next we have the supervisors' report. The farmer's market vouchers have been, are being handed out. We began the last week in May and the first day of the farmer's market, it turned out that we had some drama over them. There were some people who... We didn't want to have a, an incident, so we questioned whether they were still residents, but then it turned out one of the people was selling the vouchers and then another one took the opportunity to, being at the farmer's markets, to try to steal a bicycle. So I had a visit from the chief the next day saying, basically telling me what happened, but then saying that one of his, his people said, "Thank you for the township keeping the people all in one place so they didn't have to go chasing all over town." But we now know there were some people in a place that they should not have been living and so we now know that, that we have confirmation that at least one of them is registered outside the township, so we have proof positive that that person doesn't live in the township. So I won't go into names now, if you want some information later, we can take care of that. But the vouchers are out and so far we've given out, actually the first day, I was surprised, I already redeemed $35 worth in vouchers that, at the first market. They have a very active market this year, so lots, lots of activities there. The senior fair at North Riverside, I think went very well on May 11th. Assessor Sitkowitz and I staffed the table with a kind of a perfect number of attendees who were able to engage in, so we were able to engage in conversation. Proof of that success was that we had greater attendance at the movie that afternoon than we've ever had in the history of showing these movies. We had 34 people come out in this room to watch the movie. Might have helped that it was a newer movie too, but it was, it was nice. And our giveaway items were a hit and the attendees were pleased to learn of our many services. On May 30th, I attended the North Riverside Neighborhood Services Quarterly Meeting. Nothing of particular note, but these are the block captains in that program who look out for people in small chunks of the community to provide them with information and to see if anybody needs any additional help. So those block captains often are the ones who reach out to me regarding what kind of services the township can help with for people who are falling through the cracks. So I try to keep in touch with them. On Monday, June 5th, I went to the North Riverside. They had a meeting, a committee meeting before the board meeting regarding C4, so I wanted to have a better grasp on how other communities besides Riverside are handling that. And it seems to me that rather than they're creating new initiatives, they are looking at their community planning and looking to utilize the C4 for the opportunities to apply for various grants for projects that they already have in the works or that they've identified long term. So it was interesting to see how other communities do it. One of the things that came up there that I hadn't even thought of, apparently Cook County has seven, is planning to put 75 EV charging stations in underserved communities and it was suggested by this organization that's coordinating all of these efforts that the communities could get together and try to get some of those 75 in, in our communities here. I don't know that our community is particularly going to be considered an underserved community, but you know, it's worth a power in numbers kind of thing.
Is it underserved for chargers or underserved for...
Well, that's, that, it's undefined. I've even looked at the Cook County site, so it's kind of vague, so. Anyway, but you know, if there's groups working together, they might make a case for getting some of that. Riverside Lawn has had several visits from me this month. Some were, so one of them was because there were primary power lines to improve their electrical service going up and ComEd wanted to take down some trees that were on the township right of way. Certain residents were very anxious about preserving oak trees that were there and so after a couple of site visits, I did give permission for the removal of one oak that couldn't be avoided. It was actually growing right on top of a garage. I also gave the go-ahead for some brush to be cleared that was on a township right of way and there were some volunteer trees there and all that needed to be cleared. We did persuade ComEd to adjust their plan to preserve one very healthy oak tree that was on the west side of Stanley Avenue and there was some concern about a fence that somebody had put up many, many years ago that might be encroaching onto the township right of way, but even if they were forced to push it back a foot or two, the electrical pole couldn't have gone there because then it would, since it was a primary line, it can't go over any structures and it would have been going over a shed to, to put the pole there. So I mean, we, you know, everybody was somewhat happy and everybody was somewhat unhappy, but you know, that, that worked out just fine. So then besides that, I went out today to check on a tree that I got a call about. Also there, it is rotting, although it still has a, a pretty good canopy at the top. So I went out to verify and then I worked with the assessor to see where the property lines are and it is on our, on our right of way, so I'll be negotiating to take down that tree. But I was able to verify that the ComEd project is completed there while I was there. There's also a down, there's a dead end sign at, or there was a dead end sign on Stanley Avenue at 38th before, you know, you approach the bridge and there's no more. There is a barrier there for any cars to go, but I heard about it from Cook County, who heard about it from some Riverside residents who'd been walking in the area and were concerned that a car had come very close to the bridge. So I don't know how they got there, the, there's one of those pop-up barriers. Whether, whether they observed it when there was work on the bridge, I don't know. But anyway, I could see that there was a pole where there had been a dead end sign. When the county was contacting me, they made it clear that since there was a sign there before, we can put one up again, but if not, I would have had to go through the permission with the county to place a, a sign, even though nobody's going to go down there. Anyway, so we'll be looking for a dead end sign to put there. So it's been my month for Riverside Lawn. Let's see. The loan for the bridge closed and partly funded on June 1st. Since then, I have also drawn enough from the loan into the savings account to pay both the contractor's bill and the bond attorney for those services and he has indicated that I can also go back at some of the prior expenses that we had for it. For example, the, the engineering and architectural costs and that. So eventually I'll probably draw the full 500. Right now, I've drawn 450,000 and that's enough to pay those two bills and still say, leave something in savings. So once that, that big bill is approved, the, the architect has checked the bridge work and approved the payment of the, of the invoice, so tomorrow it'll go out by wire transfer. I don't want to send a check for 430,000 dollars. So that is in the works and I've been back and forth with the bank on how to manage those things. The, let's see, on this past Saturday, I participated in the, the Mental Health Board's Health and Wellness Fair. I think it was a rousing success and I'll, I'll let trustee Heilenbach tell more about that. As you know, we had the Decennial Committee on Efficiency and that next meeting, as a reminder, will be on August 1st at 6:30. Then we'll look at our current policies on various things. I'd like to point out, when we get to the parades, it just lists the Fourth of July, but the sheet from North Riverside also indicates they are celebrating their centennial this year, so the village will, among other celebrations, have a parade on Sunday, July 30th. That will end with a kind of a festival at Veterans Park with all kinds of activities going on there, kind of like their old Fourth of July celebration used to be. They are inviting anybody who's, who's invited to the Fourth of July parade to do that as well. I do have, personally, I have a family obligation, but if the trustees or the board would like to consider having a presence in that parade as well, you can...
July 30th?
That would be Sunday, July 30th is, is that event.
You can put me down.
And that, and put me down. And what is that for?
Okay. It's the centennial celebration, the 100th anniversary of North Riverside.
Okay.
Since its founding.
Is there a time on that?
It's the same timeframe as the Fourth of July. So it is actually, I think you have the, the copy of the form in your, in your binder, so you can see the details there.
Yeah, Independence Day.
They are looking for some, you can do some themes if you like, you can let them know if you'd like to decorate in a certain way. They're even inviting like blocks to do some activities there.
Pirate ship.
It'll come up later too, but just a reminder that on June 22nd, we are all registered for the TUC conference. That will be at the Doubletree in Oak Brook, starting at 5:00 PM. I've been approached and I thought it was in the warrants, but we didn't have a formal approach. I just had an email asking if we would be supportive of the Third of July concert from the Friends of the Fourth and asking if we would support them to the tune of $500. Of course, we'll get the placement of the, of our logo on, on the signage and all that. That's when they have the, the band here in Guthrie Park, so that's within my spending power, so if you have no objections, I will go ahead with that. And that is about the extent of my report tonight. If you have any questions about anything, I'd be happy to answer them.
Have the Friends of the Fourth provided us with their nonprofit certification?
I'd have to check. I mean, I don't know offhand if, if we have anything like that or not. If that's a problem, let me know. I mean, we could pay for some part of it instead of paying them or, you know, they didn't apply for it like a grant. They just, the president of the village approached me whether we would...
Didn't we explain to them that we need a grant request from them?
We didn't, for $500 sometimes we haven't done that.
I understand, I understand what you did, yeah, but you know, what's good for everybody else should be good for the village of Riverside.
I understand. This is a private committee though, is it not?
You're right.
Well, it's, it's supposed to be a 501(c)(3).
Right. Or at least a registered nonprofit in the state of Illinois, I think our wording also indicates that, so.
Oh, a registered nonprofit, yeah.
Yeah. I will check on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If they are not, are we not willing to make that contribution?
I myself would vote okay for it. It's $500.
Right.
I would also vote okay for it.
Yeah.
I just like to see the way, you know, the way that things are supposed to be filed, filed the right way.
Right.
Yeah. And I just...
And this is the second year, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, sorry to interrupt trustee Clark, the second year in a row that they've just, you know, flew up to us and said, "Hey."
Yeah, okay.
Well, actually...
And that's not right.
Yeah. Actually, it's the third, but the first one was right after COVID.
Right.
So we made the exception because it was right after COVID.
Okay.
On it, but I think as, you know, for good relationships and there are a lot of residents that attend that.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's good for us to sponsor it. I think we, it should be appropriate though.
Just go through the grant process in the future.
Can we get the brighter color on the logo by then or not?
Yeah, I, I'm sure that we can do something that where it will stand out more. It's a delicate logo, that's the problem, you know. I don't know if we want to change that at any point or, you know, we've already cleaned it up because it used to be a very busy, hard-to-print logo, so now that we've lightened it up, it's probably too delicate. So I'll see if we can do the logo in a more prominent color or something.
Yeah, then it, you know, it stands out more because it's hard to see, because they put those logos behind the band shed and it's ve, it's very difficult to see.
You can see it though, right?
Not very well.
Can you see it? Okay.
If you have good vision, you can see it.
Well, it's not tiny. I mean, it's just one of a number of logos up there.
My God.
Okay, okay.
Well, you know, maybe we should consider updating the logo.
Maybe we should get neon. What do you think?
You know, we've had that logo a long time. It might be, you know, this might be an opportunity for us to update it. You know, I mean, that's something for us to consider in another meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. In the meantime, I, I know that they're getting it done at Minute Man, so I can ask Minute Man to make sure that it's in a visible color.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. That is, are there any other questions for, to my report? Then are there, let me see, tell me what kind of trustees reports you have. Trustee DeCosta.
Thank you, no report tonight.
Okay. Trustee Carroll.
I think today.
Trustee Clark.
Yes, I have several things. First, the senior exercise class continues to go well. We have between 19 and 24 people, almost every class, on it. Toy Pack is having a golf outing, which is on Friday, August 18th, and it will be in Springfield. So that's to raise money, you know, for their kind of lobbying efforts.
Okay.
On it. And then the Riverside Township Lions Club chose Chief Matt Buckley as their Person of the Year and the dinner honoring him will be Wednesday, September 20th, at the Golf Club.
Is that open for everybody or do you have to be a member?
No, no, everybody. They sell tickets, you know, at different places around town.
When is that? I'm sorry, I'm going to put that...
Wednesday, September 20th. And John, I'll probably have some tickets if you want to get some tickets from me.
Well, I, I really do think, you know, Director Buckley has been very, very good to the township, to everybody, to the Mental Health Board, whatever we ask for, he's done. I really think that we should consider as, as a board, that we buy tickets for that in support of Director Buckley. I really believe that.
When the, when that information comes out, we'll certainly...
When the time comes, right.
Right.
And tickets will be available around the 1st of August and I don't have a price yet on how much they are.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll make sure to bring it to everybody's attention at that time.
Yeah, and then if you would like, I can reserve a table for the township.
Well, we'll see at that time.
At the dinner unless, you know, people want to sit with other people. It's up to the board.
I thought we were all sitting with the Buckleys.
If we're not at the head table, we don't want to go.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for that information. And trustee Heilenbach.
Yes, good evening. As supervisor Wilt mentioned, the Riverside Township Mental Health Board Health and Wellness Fair was held on Saturday. The vendor, we had a full gymnasium filled with vendors. I think everyone but one showed up, so there was, you know, there was like 40 vendors there passing out stuff. It was better attended this year than it was last year, but the vendors are happy about that because instead of people coming and grabbing their presents or prizes or swag, they get to communicate with people. So they're interacting with them and they like that a lot. And I know supervisor Wilt made a couple of tours through there. I made three or four tours through there. Everyone seemed very, very happy. It was, it was a very, very good event. I'm very happy with it, how it turned out. Another subject now is that the Mental Health Board is 50 years old this year. So we are going to discuss, bring it up at our next meeting, which is next week, and then we're going to discuss in September what we're going to do, maybe some speakers, whatever the case, just to come and rate the 50-year anniversary of the Mental Health Board. We've had, we're going to have an election of officers and that will take place next Wednesday. We do have a slate in place, but it has to be voted on by the board and once that is, at my next, at the next meeting, I will tell you who the slate is going to be. The Community Resource Center is going well. Susan, who's done a magnificent job for us there, has moved on to greener pastures. We have another gentleman by the name of Sean and he seems to be pretty good. I mean, on Saturday, when I talked to him, he was really, really good interacting with the people, so I'm pleased there. That's, that's really good. I want to thank the trustees and supervisor Wilt that came out for the event on Saturday. I know that's a busy time out of your schedules, but it means a lot to the board to see that you guys are just as interested as everybody else. I think that concludes my report.
I will just add that the residents who came to the event were also very pleased. Everybody who came out was saying, "Wow, that was a lot of good information." So kudos to the Mental Health Board for very well done organizing that. Okay, we are on to...
Oh, one more thing.
Yes.
Thank you to North Riverside for supplying the gymnasium, whatever we needed, tables, chairs, everything. They had it set up beautifully. Kudos to them.
Yes. Yeah, that was a nice cooperative effort. Alrighty, we are on to, there's no unfinished business, so we're going to new business and that is the parades, as I mentioned. The, the application from Riverside came kind of last minute and so we immediately responded since they wanted the applications in by June 1st and so we have already responded on that one. And then the, you have the parade entry form for North Riverside. As I mentioned, that there's two possible parades there and two of you have already indicated that you would participate if we do the July 30th one. And then Brookfield, typically what we do is we start the first parade, steps off at quarter to nine in Riverside, so we complete that parade and then we, we then go split up and we take one car to Brookfield and one to North Riverside because their parades both step off at 10:00 AM. So we have ordered beads again. We had somewhat of a supply, so we've just enhanced that supply, so we should have plenty for the parade. And if there's any other questions about it, if you're all amenable to it, we, you know, the, it's a very low-cost event, so if you have no objections, we will register us for all of the parades.
Yeah. I know I'll, I'll be doing Brookfield again this year along with Riverside.
Okay. Very good.
I'll do Brookfield and Riverside and I'll do the North Riverside on July 30th.
Okay. Very good.
Copy.
Thank you. Okay. So then, please note, there's a lot of rules for certain communities.
Yeah.
The rest are, of the business for this are applications for special use of, well, no, yeah, for, of special use of the building. So the first one is a baby shower on July 30th. I will abstain from this one. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion, we approve the baby shower for July 30th, 2023.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the special use request for a baby shower in the town hall on Sunday, July 30th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in, we'll take a roll call vote, sorry.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Abstain. It is carried. All right, then we have a request for a retirement party. That would be held on...
August 5th.
August 5th.
August 5th, yes, the following week. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve this as long as he gets his insurance then.
Yes, all of these are subject to the rules of the insurance, as, as will the previous one.
Are they allowed to get a band? They're asking about a mariachi band.
Well, that's something we, we can discuss. I mean, as long as they keep the...
Yeah, it doesn't bother me.
...activities within the building, I don't think there's any, any objection. If they're not parading down the street and disturbing the residents, that should be fine. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to allow the...
I thought I made a motion.
Trustee Clark made the motion.
Thank you.
Well, then I'm sorry.
Thank you in the last...
Attaboy.
Yes, so I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Carroll, to approve the request for the August 5th program within the building. Any questions, any comments? If not, then please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Okay. And then the, there's another one for October 1st, another baby shower. And what is your pleasure on that?
I'll make a motion to allow the Angelica Baby Shower on the 1st of October.
A motion by trustee Carroll. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee DeCosta to approve the request for a baby shower on October 1st. Any discussion? Hearing none, then please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. All right. Those are taken care of. Other business are simply informational items, reminder about the event, as I mentioned... A reminder about the event, as I mentioned, on June twenty-second, we are all registered for that. You should have probably gotten a confirmation email.
I registered.
Individually?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll double check, um, did you send a check or no?
No, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, no, we, we submitted, we submitted it all, and we did pay.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're, everybody's taken care of, so, uh, we are good to go on that one. Then there are some other educational opportunities. There is the May, uh, let's see, there is the July twenty-sixth Educational Event in Rockford. So if you are interested in that, please contact our office so that we can, um, get that registration taken care of for you. And, yeah, that's, that's the Rockford one, and that's the I. B. E. W. Hall in Rockford. And then finally, there is, uh, keep in mind, there, um, there will be early registration offered. I think it's already in the, uh, perspective, information about the state, uh, Annual Educational Conference, which is held in Springfield, and that will be November twelfth to the fourteenth. So check your calendars and let us know again if we can register you, or if you want to register, um, we'll need to coordinate the payment for that. All right. Looks like we are through most of our agenda, other than the warrants.
Myself, John Carroll, trustee moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of bills identified on the general warrant dated June of twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents, as presented to this board this thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee DeCosta, to approve the general warrants for June twenty twenty-three in the total amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents. Please call the roll.
Pardon me, trustee Clark? Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Okay, it's carried.
I will make another motion, uh, that this board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant dated June of twenty twenty-three in the amount of one thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. The payroll warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and four cents. The health warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents. The grants warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred dollars. General assistance warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. The township radio players warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred dollars. And finally, the food pantry warrant dated June twenty twenty-three in the amount of four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. All of the above, uh, as I presented it to this board on the thirteenth day of June, twenty twenty-three.
I have, um, I'm, I'm a little troubled because I know I saw an earlier version of these warrants that included the four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. So I don't know what happened to it. You didn't see it.
It was not in there.
And it, the bill wasn't in there either?
The bill was in there, but that, it was not listed on the warrant.
Was not listed on the warrants. I, but as I said, I saw an earlier version, and then we added something, and I think it dropped off of the warrants. Um, can I, can we add that at this time as a special warrant?
At times of the essence, I assume.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the project was approved. We, we voted on the contract, um, the, it's been signed off on. You've seen the, the invoice in there.
I've seen the invoice, yes.
I, I think it's appropriate to include that as part of the motion.
Because I don't want to not pay that, uh, send that wire tomorrow.
In an abundance of caution, we can put it on next, uh, meetings, warrants too, um, if we need to, you know, we can talk in the meantime, but I, I would, I would include, recommend including it, uh, for tonight's purposes too.
So that would, that would be four, uh, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, which I can respite, uh, recite in my sleep.
Is that also dated June of twenty-three?
Yes, that, uh, June, no, June fourteenth. It, well, it would actually.
No, June of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, June of twenty twenty-three, yes. So the, yeah, I mean, it would be, it will technically, physically go out, uh, as a wire transfer tomorrow on the fourteenth.
And as you mentioned, we, the board's already approved the contract in that amount and so forth.
Right, right.
This is not a surprise or an unknown.
Right.
Uh, expenditure and has to be paid timely, so.
Right.
Do I need to make a motion?
I think it's appropriate.
Do you amend the motion?
Probably.
I will make a motion to amend.
Might as well go by the book, yes, that's probably right.
My second motion, adding an eighth item of the, what are we calling that?
It's the, uh, the bridge.
The bridge warrant dated June of twenty twenty-three in the amount of four hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have, okay, I have a motion by trustee, well, we have the other mo, uh, a motion, so we're at, we're adding that one. Okay, so, so let me deal with the first motion first, for the warrants that were previously, uh, read, that we have a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by.
Trustee DeCosta.
Trustee DeCosta for the following warrants. General warrant in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents. Utility warrant in the amount of one thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. The payroll warrant in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and four cents. The health warrant in the amount of twenty-seven, eighty-nine and eighty cents. The, uh, grants warrant in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred dollars. The general assistance warrant in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. And the township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars. The food pantry warrant in the amount of four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Would you please call the roll on those?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. And now, there was a motion by trustee Carol, seconded by trustee, I believe, but trustee Heilenbach, to approve the special warrant for the, uh, bridge, um, painting contract in the amount of four hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars. Um, is there any discussion?
Out of curiosity, what was our first, what was the first bid that came in, three million?
No. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Seven hundred and twenty, I knew it was really high.
Yeah, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, nice job.
And just one comment on that. If you follow Facebook, you might have seen on the Riverside page that it's already been tagged with graffiti.
Oh, lovely.
Yeah.
Did they give us some extra cans?
Well, we had asked for that. I've been in touch with the contractor, again, repeatedly about that, and he said he didn't know if they had any paint left, he was gonna check, but he would definitely get us the code for the color.
Yeah, I'll go down and buy it.
Right, and, uh, yeah. Unfortunately, many of the graffiti removal items remove paint as well, and they're designed for paint. So, yeah. And at least it's within reach, but it was very sad, and I have a picture of it if you have missed it. Uh, but it's already been.
Did we fill out, I know, we, it's sometimes, you know, not gonna help out, but did we fill out a police report on it?
I will. I mean, it, it happened over the weekend. It was posted on Sunday, I believe, by one of the village trustees, and, uh, there was a lot of reaction, lots of angry emojis and, and people saying, this is why we can't have anything nice and so forth, so.
Did that trustee notify you that this was done?
No, no, I just saw it on Facebook. Thank you.
Looked it on Facebook.
He didn't notify you?
No, I didn't get anything directly.
Brilliant, okay.
Did you talk with him at all?
I have not.
Oh.
Do we have an open, um, motion? Did we, we didn't take the vote on that yet, so let's.
Motion in a second, so, yeah, just.
Yes, yes, we have a motion in a second, so, if you would please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Thank you.
If you get that code, I volunteer to go over there.
Oh, well, our custodians are kind of used to, they've been doing that right along.
I mean, no, I mean, my son needs to learn all about Tom Sawyer, how quick it been.
So you got, you say you got a crew to do this.
Look how much fun this is.